I'd like to call this meeting over. And like to welcome counselors, our guests that are presenting residents and I would say I'll have some. And before we begin our meeting, we've acknowledged that Stuyac is in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral and unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq people. For regrets, we have Mayor Roy will not be present tonight, and I see that Council Ramsey is not here. And we'll move along to approve a lot of our changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion that we approve the agenda as presented for Thursday, January, the 11th, committee of the whole session.
Move by, can Council Rose win second and bye?
Second it.
Council of the record, Richard Lang. Discussion on the motion, question, questions been called, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carried. And a disclosure of interest on agenda items. You're in on, we'll move along to the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the?
There isn't.
They're already in the package. So we're not in the package, whether there will be any changes to that. And there are no announcements or proclamations, and we'll move right into the community transit presentation.
All right, so I'm moving online for David Upton. And he's with Pumagood Solutions, and that is our, the company that we hired to do our study. And I am not seeing him online at the moment. So Mayor, my recommendation would be to, for the general local reading of the water rate study then.
Senator, you'd like to begin?
Yes. Good evening, Council. My name is Wayne Ryan, and my colleague Jerry Iver. We've been at this for more than a few years, both in which I've semi-retired. And here, Jerry's an engineer, he worked there at the Southern Engineering for a long time, and did a lot of work. I mean, didn't he work here or not, but a lot of water sewer was problems. I'm a CPA, and I worked 27 years as Director of Finance for Hell of X Water. Retired about 11 years ago, and Jerry and I have been working, we do, I think, around the majority of the water rate studies in the province. Water, water, you know, water rates in this province are regulated by the, under the Public Utilities Act by the, the Utilities Utility Review Board. So we have, what we do is we help utilities go through this process for the thing, so. That's, that's what they do, it's, it's under the Public Utilities Act as is power and, and gas. So we start with, so this rate study that we're going to see tonight is basically a business plan for the water utility. Generally for three years, including the, the next three years. So we work with staff, we worked, considered a lot with Randy, who gave us a lot of information, and some of your operations, the one, or I don't remember his name at the moment. And so we got that information together and we put it in a format. Your, your role in this is, the council is generally the board of directors of the water utility. So you have to approve this rate study before it goes to the utility review board, they won't accept it unless the utilities, Castle has approved it. If you do that, then, then, then it's generally for three years, and if you do that, then they take over the process after that. And it's about a, a three to four months generally a process, we'll file with the board. Then we'll through with a fine truth column, we'll get a whole bunch of questions on it, and then they'll come and have a public hearing. In town, I can't remember, we had, we were involved in a lesson, your last week's study was done in 2019. And your last rate increase was April 1st of 2021, so coming up almost three years before, April 1st, it'll be three years since you hit the last increase. So they take over the process, they'll take three to four months, they'll ask lots of questions, and then they'll have a public hearing somewhere here in town. And then they'll, they're in their decision, and we've been doing this long enough that. They, they give us a format to work with, and they give us a little bit of latitude within it, and we work with councils and staff within that, within that process. And just a couple of points that I know that, you know, that you've had some pretty good growth, almost 16 customers a year since we did the last rate study. And you're, and, and you, you've made money just doing every year, every year since. And Tyler rejected to break even this year. But you've got a big project coming down the road, and that's a new water source and a new water treatment plant in two or three years. Which is going to be expensive, so we've sort of, we're coming in, the last year, this will be the, the first part of this year, so Jerry and Tyler wrote that, so. That's probably enough for me, you know, turn it over to Jerry to go over the rate study. Okay, I might move up here and just occupy the end of this table. That way I'm not sitting there folding these papers and dropping them on the floor and everything all on, but a little half later, anyway. As Blaine said, we've been at this a while, you all have a copy of it, so we'll go through it, not page by page, so it won't put her to sleep. But I want to start off by saying, we are in your application, we are asking the board for a slight deviation from what they, if not, are giving us in the past, so. I'm going to explain that as I go through, but you're in a situation where actually the calculated rates in the second year would go down from your first year. Okay, that's because you have such extensive amount of maintenance to be done on the pump, this in the 24, 25, and it's not going to occur in 25, 26. And it's, it's a maintenance item, so it comes in as operating, and for that reason, drives the rates up that year and then they fall down. So what we're going to do, try something new, we're going to ask the board if they'll let us hold those rates that we set up the, the first year, for the second year. And any money that we make from the surplus rates, we're going to ask, we're going to commit the utility to take it and apply it towards your water treatment plant. Okay, so any surplus cash that we make from that, we will take that aside and apply it to the capital cost of the water treatment plant. And that would be a commitment that the utility would be making to the board. And if they agree to do this, I'm sure they will set up a forum for you to say, we want to see the account, we want to see your books, and we want to know how much money you made. Make sure you did exactly what she said you did, because historically, they will not let us set rates for money to, to use for surplus, if you want to call it that. In essence, we would be setting rates that would generate a surplus, except we have this huge job you've got coming up ahead of you. And, and it's going to call up a pair of the cash, so that's my background.
So you say they, do you mean the UARB?
UARB have to, I, I tell everybody when we go to the hearings, we can all tell them exactly what they want, what we want, but they have to gavel. Okay, and with the gavel comes the power, and so they, and they in turn, they're not unreasonable, but they also have to follow the Public Utilities Act. Okay, and they can't step outside of that because that's their governing legislation, and so they have to follow the act. And like I said, I, I have, I hope that they'll let us do this, but at the same time, I suspect them to put stipulations on it, in fact. I've already committed to take all the cash, pardon my request to them, it says that you will take all the cash, or each is approximately $50,000. And you will take that and apply it to the, to the, very simply, to the new treatment plant, okay? So with that in mind, I will turn, ask you to go to page nine, I'm looking on through just how a rate study is done, so you understand what you're building on, okay? And what we do on page nine is we take all of your projections for the future, including your operating costs for the next three years, and your. I don't know, but that, just not you as a play. And we take, we project all the operating costs to increase, we borrowed the money for your new treatment plant, we did all of that on this page. But we left the rates at the very top of the page, so your income, your revenue is left at your existing rates. And the reason we do that is this, this sheet is actually set up, three lines up from the bottom, to project whether or not you need a rate increase. And three lines up from the bottom, in 24, 25, you'll see a minus 67, 737. That's how much money you would lose if you don't adjust your rates, okay, you would run a deficit of 67,000. And the next year, as I said, it would go down to 17, but in the final year, it would go up to 252,000 if you don't get rates. And that's because the construction of the new water treatment plant is coming in in that year. So that, that sheet is to demonstrate to the board clearly that we do need to do that. The other item that I'll get into as we go through it, but you have a fair sized operating surplus of about 550,000 now. My colleague, the accountant, and my other colleague over here, I know, the accountant, they say, you can have what appears to be a nice big number, but there's not always cash to support it. And in your case, is here, we figure that the most we could take out of a torture treatment plan is about $200,000, even though the number says it should be 650. The rest is actually due to and due from, and all of these sorts of things. And it's what I call, it's not real money, it's just a number, okay, but there is somewhere, we do intend to use somewhere. Now here we go, hi, I live in average, so we hear them every night to consider it, so on this. Okay, so next, that's what that page does, next I'm going to take to page 11. And on page 11, what we do is, we work with Randy, we work with the operations people, and we generate a budget for you for the next three years. And so they give us what they're looking for for budget numbers, primarily in the first year. And then quite often what we do, and what we did in your case, is use a 3% across the board increase to allow inflation, to allow for things going up and down. 3% has worked, we are, we're hoping that things are taming down, that 3% continues to work in the next phase. What we find is some items will go up 1 and 2, some will go up 4 and 5, but 3 seems to be a pretty good running average for them. So we've set that up and we've increased your budgets each one of the years, and when I, if I refer to the words test years, that's 24, 25, 25, 26, and 26, 27. Those are the three years we're requesting rates for. So we set up the, the expense, or the expenditure budgets there for on that page, water, pumping and water treatment, the next page is the. Is what I call pipes in the ground, transmission and distribution, and administration in general, just keeping all the bills going out and the money coming in and keeping it in the right spots. So we do budgets for all of those, these are budgets for rate setting, okay? Each year, staff will still have to do a budget based on the actual things that happen, what we do is try to project. And I tell everybody, what I hope for when I do that is to get the bottom line right, I know bloody well, I'll get all the little numbers right. But as long as you have enough money at, at the end of the day to cover all the expenses, that's what's important. Because, you know, rain, big storms come, snow comes, goes, frost comes and goes, and water breaks coming down. So with that, we set up all your revenue requirements for operating, and on the next page, on page 13, 14, 15, and 16. We put in your capital budgets, what you're planning to spend on capital. And 23, 24 is history, but it, there was a water main project done this year, and that, that's been set aside. What we did do in that year is, I talked to Randy, and for your blessings, we'll do it this way. We, we didn't use any of the depreciation fund for the projects in 23, 23, 24. We've kept the money to save towards that giant project. Because it's, like this one was 1.7, the, the big projects, by the time inflation's in, we're liable $12 million for it. So we need every penny that we can get in the piggy bank by, by the third year if we can. So we're trying to put as much money aside to avoid one big shock, to minimize that big shock. So the other thing that you have, and over on the right hand, bottom right hand corner, you have what's called the depreciation fund, so every year in your rate, you build in depreciation at a set rate by the board. And it accumulates in a fund, and it's meant to be there for building things, and, and as you'll find out, if I go through three more pages, I spent almost every penny in that last year. So the same thing in year two, there's very little, that's page 14, it's $40,000 in spending only. Year 25, 26, there was no capital spending anticipated by staff, no major capital spending, and then we expect to buy a hydrant in the valley and things like that, but nothing did. Then we get to page 16, and page 16 is where we build in the, the new wells, the water treatment plant, the reservoir, the whole nine yards, all in that year. Now, we, you may ask why we don't phase it out, well, we can't under a rate structure. We can, we have to either, it's all or nothing, because to put it in rates, we have to assume that it's useful, but you're actually getting to use it, the customer's getting to use it. So what the board lets us do is to just do it as one slam, you may make a few extra dollars the first couple of years because you're actually still building it. But by the time it gets done, you will have lots of use for that cash, the first year you'll have a nice little bit of it to make and some more things, and so. It, it's not like you're going to, it's not a get rich quick school. Anyway, so the $12 million, if you go down to the center column there, you'll see that we, and we took a million, over a million dollars, a million and $50,000 of your depreciation account. Just above that, we've taken 200,000, there's 258.15, this is in the center of the page, up in the bottom five, four lines. 250,815, that's $200,000 from your surplus, the 50,815 is what we calculate, we should have as a surplus from not lowering the rates in the second year. Okay, so that takes a fair dent out of your 12 million, takes at least a million dollars out of it, you're hoping to get 8.8 million in upside funding. So all done and said, you'll still end up only close to $2 million, 1.956 and change. Okay, so we have a $2 million loan. The other thing we're going to ask the board to do, and they have done this for us in the past, we're going to ask them to allow you to phase in the depreciation on that new asset. The depreciation on that asset, we calculate will be close to $200,000. So instead of adding that on at the same year as you're putting that first loan payment on. We're going to ask them to let us bring it down to 25% of the full depreciation. Generally, assets like that have between a 50 and a 75 year life. I, I'm not going to worry about it personally, but 50 years from now, somebody may say, I wish they'd put the extra money, none of us will be around to worry about it, so. Anyway, no, I don't think it will have any impact on the long term, because it is such a long life, I don't. So we're going to ask them to look for 25% depreciation and commit the utility to phase in and the rest of the depreciation at your next rate study. Okay, you're not getting away for free, you have to commit that you will do it, and you will put the depreciation aside, and. At some generation down the road, we'll be thankful that depreciation is there when it needs to be replaced. So, so that's the, the ask on the water treatment plant and on the, the big spend, so those are the biggest expenditures that you have. So with that, we now talk, we now start looking at where we can, what we do with the money that we're going to generate, that we need. And the first draw on the money, in fact, is fire protection. The water utility is permitted under the act, deliver water for potable use, okay? Your, your business is delivering drinking water. Providing fire protection is a service that the water utility provides to the town. And they, they do that because it's convenient, we can build bigger towers, play an S B fire to work here, I didn't, my company was, an engineer, I worked with, did you want to power it? So. He was, so what we do is, we, we then have to figure out how much money we put in, in fire protection. And what we do is, we take, on page 20, we take all of the assets in the utility, and we divide them up as to whether they're useful for fighting a fire or not useful. And the most obvious cases is a water meter, which when a fire occurs in a house, having a water meter in the basement really doesn't do you much good. So it gets a 0% allocation fire, as opposed to a fire hydrant, which really doesn't do much for delivering potable water to the house, but is quite crucial in fighting a fire. So it goes 100% to fire and 0% to, to general service. Everything else falls in between, the board allows us to allocate 10% of all assets like treatment plants and things like that to fire protection. Because during a fire, all of those things still work, and they still contribute something. However, things like the water tower and the big pipes in the street, they're actually designed for fire protection, not for delivering water. So they're assigned actually 60% to fire protection and 40% to, to general service. So when you build a new treatment plant, it drives up your cost, but if you build a new reservoir, it drives up the fire protection cost, because. In fact, about 60% of the side, the capacity of the town is there for fighting fires. You would have a much smaller tank, a much smaller pipes in the ground, if all you had to do was deliver water. Okay, it would just be a much different system altogether, the big pipes are needed for the fires of mainstream and things like that. So we do that for each year, and then on page 24, we take all of those operating budgets that we talked about back on the first page. All of the revenue requirements, and we divvy them up between fire protection and assigning either 10% or the calculated rate that we got from his previous calculation. As to what, how much goes to fire protection, and in your case, we end up with 207,000, first. Table up there, 27,000 dollars in fire protection, you know, quickly looking back.
Page down.
Yeah. Yours, yeah, right at the very top page, the very top square, 207, 011, your current fire.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, current fire protection charge from the town, urgent the town is 188,598, so it's going up some. The second table, I had to put in, it's called handbook, and the third table is requested, this is back to me saying that we hold all the rates. So an actual factor would be 189 the second year, if we didn't, if the board doesn't approve it, but we're going to ask them to approve 207, 011 again to the second year. That idea of holding the rates there at its constant level, and the difference between those two is about, well, 18, $18,000. You're going to have to put it in the bank, and, and it goes towards the new water treatment plant too. If you can't cockpit the money and run, I guess is what I'm saying. And then in the final year, at the very bottom right hand corner, the fire protection rate is 254,513, and that's from the new. What I've learned since you came for their treatment plant and all the rest of it. So that's how the fire protection is done, that takes the first amount off of it. We then go to page 26. And what we do there is we take the balance, we take off the fire protection, the first column is the total we require, the second column in these tables is. The amount for fire protection, and the, the third is, is just the net of those two, it's, it's one minus the other. And we divide it up between base and, and what we call commodity, or the water, place the water itself. And in your case, you're, you're doing what we've done in the past, we, we find that most utilities do quite well, it's about 40% of the revenue comes from base. And about 60% comes from the, the water you sell. The reason we found that works well, we feel, is because at 40%, you get fairly good revenue coming in all the time. But 60% still leaves the customer with the ability to influence their bill. Okay, and I can tell you point blank, that if you have a situation where you charged 100% to base, people will waste water. Okay, that's what you thought, because at that point, it doesn't matter how much you use, it doesn't make the bill any higher, the bill's the same all the time. We dealt in quite a few communities, including Rise of Arizona, Bloonenburgs, just getting away from them, we fully expect to see their water go down, the water consumption go down, because. It's, I, I tell everybody, it's like going to the, the buffet lunch, you put more on your plate than you would if you ordered dinner. Okay, and whether you need it or not, and, and when, so we, that's the balance we try to strike, you want to get a, a balance where by the customer. Your, your residents feel like they can influence the bill if they're efficient with the water and they turn the tap off. Conversely, you want to make sure you have enough cash flow coming in, that if something happens, the volume starts falling off, like COVID hits or some other things. And you, you still have some, some good cash flow coming in to keep the bills being paid, so. That's, that's what's done in those tables, again, because there's one marked, and the second one down, so on the right hand side is marked handbook, and the second one's that might have requested. And Kevin will appreciate what I'm doing this for, because the board will be meticulous and ask us for the two tables, so I thought we'll save them time, we'll put them both in the same study. Okay, so we are requesting that the thing be held in the second year and then the final year, so that's how we get the base there. The next page, page 27, we didn't divvy up how to pay people pay for the base charge. And you have right now a total of 675 customers, as Blaine says, you've got some growth since the last time. And what we do to determine how much each one pays in base charge, we use, it's basically the capacity of the meter they have. And so a 5/8 inch meter is assigned a capacity of 1. And if you go down to a 4 inch meter, it's got a capacity of 25, that means in testing, it'll take 25 times more water through a 4 inch meter than you could through a 5/8 inch. Okay, it's just simply larger, it takes more water through it, so guess what, we charge the base charge, if you have to have a 5/8 inch meter, you pay 25 times more. Okay, than you would if you were a homeowner. So the idea is that you've got the ability to take more water, therefore, we'll assume that you will only take it, and therefore you will pay a higher base charge. And that's fair to the customer, the, the basic residential customers is rated as a 1, and everyone else pays a ratio of that, depending on how big the meter is. So if you do a business with an inch and a half meter, there's five businesses here, they will pay five times as much, because that's how much more water they can get from the meter. So we do that. The next page is just math, because then all we do is divide things up and separate them out and, and make, make up the base charges. The other thing in there is all the customer charge, that's to reflect the fact that every customer gets only one bill, by the way. So it doesn't matter if you're 4 inch meter or not, so you separate it out a little bit and say, no matter who you are, you get one bill, but the 4 inch guy pays 25 times more for his base meter. And base for his, for his little bill charge on top. So that's how we get the base charges, the next page is 29, that's how much water you sell. Right now, you're selling 21.8 million imperial gallons, so this is annually. It has growth built into it, because we're projecting growth in the number of customers, as each year grows on, and. There are noises, but nothing back to.
Somebody doesn't have their views on.
Okay, so anyway, so we, we have 20. You're basically, we just account how much water you're going to sell, and we'll have the both in the cut number, just beginning. So then, we, again, we've already figured out that 60% of your revenues don't come from that, so we know what that number is, and we just do the math, we figure out how much every thousand gallons will cost on page 30. And if I can, I'll take everybody, I'll save you, the pages of math there, this. God forbid you wouldn't have any pages of numbers on it, page 33, this, so you realize that Blaine and I didn't actually make this up, this was, there's actually a handbook from the board. And it's actually a whole group in the United States that spends half of their life, a private society, I belong to, the American Waterworks Association. And they actually have a manual of this thing, on how to do water rates, to make sure that we charge, the, the theory is that we should charge fairly for the service you get. So every customer should pay fairly for what they get, so the smaller meter pays less for the meter, but they pay the same amount for the water. Because the water costs the same whether you have a small meter or a big meter, okay? So on page 33, at the very top of it, it's, this is calculating what the increase will be in both dollars and cents and percentages for the average customer. Now, what we did to get an average customer, we took the total amount of water sold to the 5/8 inch customers, divided by the number of customers. Okay, and in your case, you're using 6,949 gallons every, per customer. Okay, which is really quite low, okay, that's, and so. With that in mind, that's what your average customer would use, they may use more, someone else may use less, that sort of thing, but that's, that's for both averages of all the customers you have. And that average customer is supposed to see the goal of up 9%. And that average customer is supposed to see the bill of up nine percent the first year or fourteen dollars and fourteen cents in the quarter. This is the upper right hand two columns. Okay, yeah. So that's the change right there, that's projected that first year. Now, that may, nine percent sounds much larger than fourteen dollars and fourteen cents over three months, okay? Uh just so you realize. And as my, and that's at a hundred and seventy one dollars for a quarter. As my my colleague in the quarter always says to me. I wish my cell phone bill was like that. That's a hundred and seventy dollars for three months. So and my cable TV and a couple more things, so uh. Anyway, so that's the first one. The second table there is if we allow the rates to go down, but more importantly, it's the one that's shaded. And you'll see they're all zeros, because we're requesting that the rates stay the same for the for the second year. Okay? Then in the final year, all hell breaks loose, I'm sorry. But we have to build a treatment plant and there's no cheap way to build a treatment plant. Okay, there's. We're looking at rates going up twenty five percent that year and forty three dollars and twenty cent, twenty eight cents a quarter. Uh there is, we've done as many things as we can do at our end. We've saved your depreciation for one year, pushed it over. Yeah, hold your rates for a year, get another fifty thousand dollars. We've tapped into all the things that we could think of tapping into. From a rate setting point of view. You've already apparently applied for like eight million or close to nine million dollars in assistance for the plant, I think still. Or your, our reply, I guess, for that, for a grant, a capital grant for it from the federal government. Will be through, whatever they call it this month. It used to be ISIP, but it's something new. I'm just holding up to all of the. Yeah, an eight point eight million dollar, that was on page sixteen. What's the the cost of the plan and where the money had to come from. But those are the, are how the rates are coming out at the end of the year, uh the end of the term. So with that, um that's, that's the the tale of the whole story right there. Now, the your rates in the end, two hundred and fifteen dollars, they're. Higher in the province, they're probably in the upper twenty five percent in the province picture, a long ways from the top. Okay, in dollars and cents. Yeah.
The much of that is a function of pretty small you build. Six hundred and seventy five, hopefully, you know. You had a water treatment, oh, no, not any water treatment by the whole city, but we do. Yeah, they're supplied and. But uh but when you do that, you'll, you know, presumably you'll accept for the next seventy five years.
Yeah, now you you should be in much better shape. I know the old St. Andrews service system's been nothing but. A misery for a long, long time, ever since I've been coming here to work on water rates and things. Sources of supply has been an issue here. Uh trying to get clean water to to start with and to work with. So that's the, that's the belly of all of that stuff. Um the uh. The final page is just a a page that says what will happen with the the rates and basically. Um we end up, we we're projecting it with like a four hundred and thirty thousand dollars operating surplus, because I said at the beginning. It's not all real money. In fact, you're in the middle of a trail, it's just a number, unfortunately. Uh this is, it's due to, it's due from, it's due from a number of sources where it's often probably everyone to realize. So the next pages are the um are the. Schedules of rates and charges. Page thirty eight is the first year and. These are actually type of documents that look to get back from the U A R B with the signature at the top saying you're approved to charge them. And that's, these are the recent charges. This is what the hearing's all about, is is getting a schedule of recent charges for the future. We do that for each year. Uh we did talk to staff as well about your service charges. Um. They've been, like everyone else, they were fifty dollars for whenever the vehicle owner to do any service calls or. This is someone, you know, requesting a turn off or a turn on or some other thing. Um. And most utilities and your staff recommended, we do it here as well, have raised that to sixty dollars. Because it involves usually a person and a truck and ton, okay? And and someone said to me, and I said to myself, it's it's hard to get all that equipment together and get it to roll for less than. And fifty bucks, it's been fifty dollars since two thousand and ten, I think, so I'd be, anybody pending the adjustments on those. So we we did that, uh and we did that through the document. I will point out that on page forty, halfway down, under disconnect fees. The uh, I think the typist I hired will re-recommand it, if I can get on my hands on him. Uh I put in three hundred dollars in the bottom right hand corner of that disconnection fee. It will be two hundred dollars. It goes to the board, is two hundred dollars. Every other staple. Okay, that is outright typo for somebody with fat fingers. You're not gonna be able to type in the first place. So the next page is like a page, we do that for each year. So. Page forty one is the second year, the two hundred bucks is right in that one. And page forty four is for the third year. Last thing, we have what's called rules and regulations, which are really the rules of the the water utility. Uh we didn't go over these. We do every time with people. Uh we have two changes that. Staff felt would be well good, good to have. Uh the first one is on page two, near the bottom, second, the paragraph just above the C. The old rules and regulation, uh this is page forty eight. Okay, sorry, I can give a page number. Um. The the old rules and regulations said it was at the discretion of staff. And that sometimes leads to some pressure, a lot of, this is, who paid, who did he put the water meters name in? We have a rent to profit. Is what the issue becomes. And if you put it in the name of the renter, which has always been a a lot of practice in many areas. What happens is the renter leaves town and you have no recourse, because they don't exist anymore. They're they're just gone. So what utilities have done slowly over time, because you can't backdate it, you just have to do it the next time it happens. What they're doing is they're asked that the person who owns the building. The the owner of the building will become the customer of record. Okay, so they get it, they can take the bill, some utilities will even mail the bill to the renter, okay? But they just take the bill, give it to the renter and say, here's my water you used last month, and here's what you owe me. Uh and that's generally how it flows through. Certainly, in buildings with multiple tenants in it, that's been done for years. So if you have something with four, four separate apartments in it, there's only one water meter. So the the bill's always been in the name of the owner, but the the renter skipping, it got, it's got. Quite noticeable, almost everywhere as we go, some will say, oh yeah, we've had a couple of those. Uh where we had, you know, people randomly properties, they became record. They moved to New Brunswick or something and there's people, nowhere to be found and. So there's no back. So we just changed it over instead of at the discretion of staff, because they said they were trying to make it always that. We just said, and this is what a lot are doing, a property owner rents or leases a property or self-continuity, she'll be the customer, end statement. So that's a change that we filled in there. The other change was on page fifty five. As water gets more expensive, this one's become a little more evident occasionally, and that is theft of service, believe it or not. Okay, so we simply added a clause saying that you're co scaling water, you're always some serious cash. Okay, and the both of those have gone through the board before. Both of them have been approved in many of the buildings. Uh but we have seen in boards theft of water. Uh and primarily, quite often, it's they they get their hands on the wrench that turns the water on and off, the long one that the. The service department uses. And you can turn the water off and they'll turn it back on, something. Uh so that's a the common way to do it. So that's, that's the rate study. That's the whole arc now. And like I said, we've. We've tried to do our best to get the rates as reasonable as we can in that, you know, when you're building the big plant. But, you know, all I can say is, you know, I can know from your history that you do need a source of water. And that you hope to grow, so I'm sure you you know that yourself, so. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor, I could ask through you to the. The salt please.
Yes.
Okay, um just, when you're talking retaining the cash. In the second year of the profit, is that the cash over and above the allowed return rate base or? Hundred percent of the surplus?
Yeah, no, it's a hundred percent. No, no, it's only, we we have a calculated amount in here. I think we can talk them into being. Either how much surplus you generate or this amount is the maximum. I mean, okay, I I that's what I would suggest we do over here, try to get them to even know.
I just saw that there's some sort of, if there's a rate of return basis expected.
Well, there there is no rate of return based request release.
Okay, alright.
No, there's nothing in the, uh we have to se- we have to separately request a rate of return. Given the cost of water, here I wouldn't, you know, it's not a good place for a rate of return.
Yeah.
There there are two things that are, Jerry Massalwin was the pump. So you're preparing the public. The other thing is you're paying off a loan, so the debt service is gonna drop. And we we don't see any sense in dropping the raise and the head of the bank going back up again, so. What the board may do is they may, they, they'll ask you to say, require that you set up a reserve for that amount of money.
Yeah.
But that's pretty simple.
The, in fact, we've had really bad luck. The board has too, when we cut rates, lower rates and then raised them again. Because people say, why did you bother? You gave them like five dollars off last year, now you want backs plus more. Okay, and so we, they they actually dislike seeing rates go down and back up, because they get a lot of complaints from us. Yeah.
And the, you're, uh you had mentioned inflation in three, but I was reading four in the body of the document.
Yeah, okay, it was the four. It was the four in this one, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because we had that guy, that's right. Some of the worst reasons were four. We had a few too many on the go here lately.
And uh. I guess when I looked at it a little more carefully, I was just like, it's a fairly conservative. Given the development it's ongoing, fairly conservative number for number of new meters. The next three years, but when I look, it's gonna have, even if I said fifteen a year, it wouldn't have much of that. It would have to be way, way more than that.
We're usually, we like to be conservative for a couple of reasons. One is, if we can. And you don't get them.
Yeah.
Then you're short.
Yeah.
And it's a lot better, so so if you get them, you're gonna be back here in two or three years anyway. Uh it it's gonna help you with with that other thing and. Uh I think, I think when we talked to Randy, there was some question, you know, whether there's a big bulk of whether. What what's the next couple of years? Is it gonna be slower down? Interest rates are higher, all that other stuff, right? So it's a question of, so that's why we use the more conservative number, or we're suggesting use a more conservative number.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, that was all mine.
And Councilmen, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I have nothing. Cast your own square.
Of course I do. I always do.
Okay.
Um it's a lot of information to take in.
Yeah.
Um I I wanna thank you for going through it um. As as much as you did. Um I do have a number of questions. Some you may be able to answer and some you may not. Um but I'm gonna start with a real easy one first.
Okay, let's do it.
What size does a pipe, does the normal resident have, the five eighths?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the five eighths meter is the standard residential meter.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, um.
With all the five eighths, we tell everybody, tell like this, vast majority will be all residential. There might be a building or two in the downtown floor that was, you know, residential, turns back and forth.
Right.
Like that, might be still a problem.
Okay, I'm six hundred and seventy five customers.
Yeah.
Six hundred and forty five.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that, that's why I asked, I saw the number. Um the lagoon. I think we've applied for a grant for that to be done within.
That would be wastewater, that's nothing to do with water.
Okay.
That's sewer.
So what do you mean by wellfield development?
Wellfield development is going to be your.
The aqua, the aquifer?
Yes, the aquifer.
Okay, which, isn't that almost already complete?
What page are you on?
I'm on sixteen, sorry. I've got a lot of highlights all through this, so.
Okay, I, what I did is I took, uh to get the numbers on this, I took the presentation from W S P.
Oh, okay.
Just inflating their numbers.
Oh, okay.
I I just took them off, I think four percent a year. You're right, I use four percent of everything. Uh so I just inflated them up for the third year, because it was gonna be three years before you built it. And I didn't wanna carry a number that was three years old, given the the way we're seeing.
Because it's my understanding, and I, this may not be the right place to ask this question, but it's my understanding that we have, in the middle of December, there was a motion made. For us to approve for the capital growth grant of five million dollars for the lagoon, which you say is wastewater.
Yeah.
Um and then my understanding is a lot of this money for the aquifer has already been allocated. But it's maybe not.
I I I've assumed that you're getting eight point eight million, eight million, eight hundred and six thousand.
From grants?
Yeah, from somebody else, okay. But I call senior outside funding. I never know what to call it anymore.
Yeah.
I call it outside.
Which I don't think we've even looked at yet.
Okay, but that that's sort of the going rate, the ratio, I forget what that is, seventy three percent or something.
Yeah.
Whatever the fancy number is.
Depends on which one it is, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, so you're basing that on how much is that water treatment plant gonna cost us?
Yeah.
How much?
Well, I, the total system is twelve billion dollars from the W S P proposal. Okay, so I took their proposal and they said, these are all the pieces. I called them. And asked them if there was any of it that we could build in phases that would be useful. Okay, in other words, could we build the transmission pipe and could we use it? The answer was no, we had to build the wells, then the treatment plant, then the reservoir, then the pipe. And only when we had the first three things done, could we use the pipe.
Right.
And before that, nothing's connected. So I was trying to figure out a way to do it over two years instead of one, uh to spread it out a bit more. But it works, the the board will give us something, they won't let us depreciate and capitalize on anything that's not useful.
So we haven't made a decision on the wells yet. You may not have known that. Um there's been no motion to council made yet on that. So if we don't do that well system and we do something else, then these numbers may be.
We may be wrong, we may have to go back in front of the board and hopefully ask for a reduction price, because you're doing something that costs less.
Right, 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 right.
Yes, so I I don't think, I don't think anybody would turn you down, okay?
Right.
And sometimes, I'm saying, I I will, I'm in the county, but I think you have to do something. So the the current water system isn't going to survive. So you're gonna have to, you know.
But I don't wanna rush into a decision if the numbers aren't correct.
No, no, so what, sometimes the board will do, if if, I mean. You know, i- i- if it hadn't, then, sometimes what the board will do. Because a lot of these, a lot of these projects are based on grant funding. They don't get the grant funding. They they can't go ahead.
Right.
So it's, sometimes now what the board is doing is saying, okay. We're assuming you're gonna get the grant funding. If you don't go ahead with it.
Right.
You can't take the money and spend it on something else. You gotta, you gotta put it away into a bank account, a reserve, until you do decide what you're gonna do.
So then would the recording have to go back to the U A R B that we didn't get the funding?
Yes.
Yeah.
You'd have to report.
You 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 would have to follow their order, but if they did that, what they've done so far is make, in their decision, they've. They made a heavy suggestion. They've never made it an order. But what they've said is, if you don't get this, because, you know, we we've done a lot of these over the last couple of years where there had been funding applied for. But if they don't get the funding.
Right.
That they won't be able to do all the stuff they planned to do.
Right.
So in in your case, they would either suggest or they would, they would, they might order. Because, you know, if they give you rates and and you don't do this, and you can get away with it, doing it, you wouldn't have to reach for another ten years.
Yeah. And that means, you know, then there's a whole question of equity, like someone today is paying for water down over ten years. And the whole thing with fairness falls apart.
Right, right. And that's why I guess I'm asking the questions, because this hasn't, there's been no motion to council on this stuff.
Quite surely, the summary, a sum of this amount.
Yeah.
That the board will put stipulations in saying that if it doesn't go ahead, here's what you're gonna do. You're gonna put the cash aside.
Yeah.
And save it for when it does go ahead.
Yeah.
Or we're gonna order you to come back and. And Blaine says, they don't, they don't issue the word order very often, but when they suggest something, it's loaded.
Okay. The flip side of this, why it's often done this way, is. You don't wanna commit to spending twelve million dollars if the board's not gonna approve the rates to do it.
Okay.
It's, it's, so you're sort of, you're always sort of doing both at the same time. You're evaluating your project and the alternatives.
Yeah.
And once you got the some general agreement that this is the best method ahead, which is sort of, the way I understand, my brief time, I understand that. There's some sort of consensus that this is probably the method that has to happen. That's the best estimate you have on it now, so. Let's get it in front of the board to see what they're gonna say. And then if they say no, then you really have to go back and tear it down and say, well, how do you?
Yeah.
You have to justify with a, a different price tag.
And is it normal for us to be doing a rate increase every two years, three years?
Every three to four years, it's quite normal, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just a couple of comments. Whatever, whatever the council decides, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do this project or do whatever, but if you, if you spend, uh, plan to spend more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you have to get the board's approval. They won't let you spend, you, you know, you can, you can, but you need, you need their approval. So whatever, whatever product, whatever is coming, come down the pipe to either fix the water system or expand the water system, put across one or two, so they're gonna be involved in the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as what, as far as what the increases are, it really depends. We, we did one for town of Trenton, the town of Trenton has not spent five cents on the water utility for years. Their rates are, are doubling, almost doubling every year for a couple of years because their system is collapsing around them.
Mm-hmm.
So it depends, you, you get a place like, uh, uh, Wolfville or New Lyons, that has new, fifty new customers every year. They don't need, and they have their groundwater, so they don't, they don't need it. Really depends on, you know, your, your, you know, your, your, costs will increase uh, every year with inflation, your wages will go up, your chemicals will go up, your parametres will go up. If you, if you don't have that same increase, uh, either in customer base or, or, or rate increase, then your utility will go into deficit.
And deficits are, and you don't want to go into deficit territory, that's bad news. So then you have to put money in and have to pay the debt. Have, have to get the rates up to pay, maybe what you should be paying. Plus, we have to start making payments on the debt right away and have to pay the debt off fairly quickly. Because the board rules, there's, what they refer to as anti-general issue left, and you're not allowed to run up a bill for your grandkids. Sorry, that's not how the game's played.
So I'll end with a really easy question again.
I've got grandkids, so I know.
I'll end with a really easy question again. What, um, is the current disconnect fee right now? As you say, you want to raise it.
It's fifteen dollars, they were all fifty.
They're all fifty and you want to raise it to?
Sixty.
Well, yours is two hundred.
Oh, that's for after hours, that's for when you have to pay the guy to call somebody, it's something, you know, that they forgot to do or they, if something happened to them that they had to call you over the eleven o'clock at night.
No, I thought it said disconnect.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's for after hours.
You're doing it those, it's the after.
And that was, oh, and that's always been the church?
Yeah, no, it's, it's been one fifty up until now, I think. No, it was one hundred, no, it was, yeah, uh, let's see. It should, it should read fifty and it was fifty and a hundred, it's going to sixty and two hundred.
It's fifty.
The, the general ratio that we're seeing right now between the one to the other is three. Okay, because most of them say, a lot of the agreements they have with their staff should call for a minimum three hour call out. So you can't take me out of bed and send me to cold in the middle of winter for fifteen minutes worth of work, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna get paid for three hours if you're gonna do this to me. Uh, and that's, I think that's a pretty standard clause in, in a lot of agreements and certain.
Yeah, we're not unionized.
Yes, standard practice, which what we're sitting around is, that's what they call a three hour call. You know, it's so, it's so that someone doesn't get a call, you know, like I said, they have to get up and at two o'clock in the morning, we'll do something, and it's a fifteen minute job. Getting there in about six hours, so.
Those are all mine.
I don't have anything, you explained it, I looked over at myself and couldn't make heads nor tails of it really. So you did a wonderful job making it crystal clear to me.
As long as you understand what the principle is and what we do, and that is, you, you don't make any profit at water, you're not allowed to make a profit unless we declare a dividend to the owner. Uh, dividend to the owners done by a few utilities, but none with the cost. They're putting their end up for third quartile and cost of service. Because that, that just becomes money that's lost to town, but it's from the town customers, so it's not like it's magic money.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's just for insane people who pay the taxes.
And Councilman.
Like I say to Jerry, health tax is getting ocean stewy act every year. You see something like that, so you're gonna need, you're gonna need a water supply, a good water supply. Uh, if we're gonna maintain that. And you, you probably need whether or not to do that, because I, I think, like I said, I think there's some issues with the.
Yeah, no, that's seen under sure our system has had its issues for years, I've been carrying on with that a long time in my career. So, yeah.
And it's not new, I can tell you that, so it's thirty years that I've been hearing that.
Yes.
I mean, it was tough, but I remember the last, the rate study began in two thousand nineteen, it was being explored.
So I, I think on the, on the capital project, like Kevin says, you know, there's two sides to this. You can't go ahead with it until of course you can, the board will say you can until they see the impact on rates, so you're kind of.
What if the project, so we have an estimate that had twelve and change.
Yeah, twelve, same.
And last I understood, that was a class D, D or C?
Yeah.
So what if it comes in at eighteen million? Because everything costs a lot of money now, and it goes up by, then what happens when?
Well, I mean, then, then you think they're approval to go ahead and can adjust your rates, or a commitment that you will adjust your rates.
So you would have to go back and say to the UAR, to the board that it came in not prior.
Yeah, forgiveness, if it's twelve million, it comes in at twelve million, one hundred thousand, they'll, they'll not get upset. If it's twelve and comes in at eighteen.
Yeah.
Alarm bells are gonna ring here.
Or we're into, like, long discussions about infrastructure charges to developers and things like that. Or, or anything that's not already zoned for development.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the other side. If you're getting pressured from the development community, you may want to start looking at, you know, how much you, how much more is the capital are you gonna pay to hook into our system?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's, we'll call it what you want, but as Kevin says, it's basically a development charge. And it's, it's not out of the question, depending on the places that are growing.
Yeah, you can fix, to an extent, you could probably fix an, an issue
Mm-hmm.
with what we got, but then to increase extra capacity and then adds to the factor, you know, when, when they're doing their final pricing. Just what they can scale back and so, what's the difference between those two scales and sort of different way you recover?
And then.
You know, and, and whatever, whatever happens, you're probably gonna have to send some kind of this over relation campaign to know what's coming. You know, and it probably will affect your consumption, because people will, they'll cut back, they'll, they'll, they'll replace their eight liter toilet and then replace their thirteen liter toilet with a four liter toilet. You know, I mean, that's, and that's, that's not a bad thing, it's just, uh.
Yeah, and no matter what you decide in the, the longer term, you do need rates fixed year, or you're gonna lose money.
Yeah.
Period.
The thing, the thing is.
So can you, can you ask for, for rates for just two years, or do you, is it normally three or is it normally twelve?
No, three, three is the maximum we're allowed to ask for.
Oh, okay.
So we always ask for three, you're paying us due to this exercise, you don't pay for the airing hall rest, but get as much money out of it as you can. Uh, generally, when we do three year rates, you can generally get, like, in the fourth year, you, you should be looking seriously, especially if you're doing a big project at this, at how you're doing and whether or not you're gaining the growth you thought you would, whether your cash flow is where you thought it was. Because running into a deficit is always, it's bad territory because it, it happens so quickly and, you know, it seems like small change. If you, if we had to go in and throw another fifty thousand dollars on this because we had a deficit, we had to pay back.
And so how much cash did you say we actually had?
Two hundred thousand dollars, a little more than two hundred thousand, in real money.
In real money, yeah, like, yeah, cash.
In real money, yeah.
Not, not pipes in the ground.
No, no.
Cash.
Real money, yes.
Some, some, some of our accumulation surplus is inventory parts and supplies, some of it's standing receivables.
Okay.
And so once you subtract off those, then you're like, yeah.
Okay.
And, and.
So we actually have two hundred thousand in that bank that we can get?
Yeah, and you have about six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars, it's six hundred.
Appreciation fund, right.
Uh, depreciation fund.
But, but that's. That's in a reserve fund?
That's in a reserve fund, yeah, yeah, and that's, that's cash. That's the one that we grew as much as we could, told my million dollars to the third year, and then we took it all up.
So that's like, kind of, right now, we have like eight hundred.
Yeah, it's about six hundred the, going into this year, going into twenty.
That plus the two fifty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the two fifty.
And rates right now, your depreciation is about a hundred grand a year. So that's essentially, if you get a hundred grand a year, the rates, you're gonna have to spend to stop reaching systems, compared to on capital. And that's what, what are the big factors? I mean, there's two sides to look at, one is the, the, the two hundred thousand dollars a year increase on this thing will be hard on rates. But it's also gonna give you then about three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars a year in capital. Money being raised and put away, which you can put away and spend on others now, is.
I just want to follow up on Councilman Krillman though, um, so how much cash do we actually have? Is it two hundred, or is it eight hundred, or is it six hundred? And then six hundred and then depreciate.
Well, you have six hundred in the depreciation fund, which is restricted money, you can't take that and do what you want. Now spend it on replacement capital or capital.
And that's cash?
That's, that's hard currency, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and the other one that's listed as six hundred, but I think, Wayne, you said there's probably two hundred safely in there and the rest is, as Kevin said, it's due to and due from a whole bunch of people.
And so then, so right now, we ne- needed it to do a big project, we have eight hundred cash.
Yeah, you do.
And by the time, by the time twenty-six, twenty-seven was around, you'll have, you'll have about nine hundred thousand in that depreciation fund. Because you're not spending any of the funds over there, so it's gonna grow a little bit. So you're gonna, you, you're gonna have, you, you're gonna have over a million in cash. The trouble is, the project will cost twelve million.
Yeah, yeah, the bottom.
Or more, or more, that's right, I mean, that's right. But as I say, it'll never get cheaper. You know, it's, the longer you wait, the more expensive it will get.
Anyway, uh, yeah, no, that's the, yeah, there's only, just basically a million dollars that we can give in the depreciation.
That's in twenty?
Twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Anyway, they're hoping that he confused you. It's, it really is, like, Wayne's, these, these things here, we don't, we don't actually make up all these rules and regulations. There is a handbook for the boards, for the eighth there, that gives us all the guidelines, so we're allowed to work in. And, and as Kevin knows, and we go looking for all of those spots where we think we can add to the board to help us out a bit. Uh, in your case, it's ask them not to roll the rates back the second year. Uh, we're not asking them to increase it, if we ask them to increase it, I know they'd say, well, because they already have their own red decisions on that.
Yeah, I bet you, we were through the case launch where we had our third year turned down, they only approved the second year, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no.
So they can say, we're not approving the third year until we see that you actually have the funding?
Back reasoning in my case, but there was, there was, there was a reason they wanted to wait.
More innovation, yeah, yeah.
And they, and they, some of this stuff will come under the IRS, I wonder if this council passes, you've got a contract starting. And if they, they, they very well, very well may do that, and say, look, in two years' time, you're gonna be closer to, to, to making a decision.
They'll ask us at least fifty-seven, but.
The last.
Yeah, like, it's been four years, so it's.
We've heard it goes well over two hundred and fifty now.
Yeah.
The last, the response is a hundred pages long.
They've got some new rate analysts and they, they're, are, are trying to prove themselves on their own, they'll get paid by how many questions.
Yeah. I know it's person, sorry.
Yeah, anyway, so.
Thank you very much.
These decisions are not easy, they, they, it's not, it's not an easy thing. Yeah, but, uh. Brand's cool, guys, you're retired, we find the state of Jim Warren. I always like this, I always like to say, my, my former general manager used to say, there's nothing that will shut a panel any faster than no water. Do it on electricity, you can't do it with a bike. Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just.
Well, Deputy Mayor, what normally would happen at this station process is the committee would recommend the council to apply, to submit application to the UARB. And then the council then can discuss it further at the council meeting before we submit the actual application.
We can come see you about a question.
Yes. Yeah, Kevin Smith did this before. He's, he's, there's, there's, there's no applications made in the council, there's, there's. I knew that Wayne, I have to keep that, the, how would it make an occupation or discover, or does any CMO rest on with the elected?
Under the Act, sort of, you're a record, you're the board adjutant. You know, you guys are excited for it.
This is Richard, and you have the other representative, you're not, you're not attending.
Just, just that we could have that motion.
Yes.
So can I just ask a couple of questions? Like, do we have to raise that fifty dollars to sixty, and that one fifty to two hundred?
You don't, you don't have to do anything the council doesn't want to do. That, that is the recommended course to, you know, it's, rates are set, you know, that was set in your regulations a number of years ago. I know C, if it was two thousand ten, as he mentioned, I know CPI has been about twenty-six percent since two thousand ten. So, you know, it was fifty going to sixty, all you're doing is following CPI over that period.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm looking at is, um, trying, in my mind, trying to cushion the increase to our residents when they've just got their property tax assessments that have gone up.
And to disconnect, there are a few people gonna get that, right? It's not, like a disconnect fee is not someone that, what you're looking, these are fees for extra service overnight.
Okay.
If they're paying their bills on time and paying their, what, if we have to go cut their water, that's.
So this isn't if something happens and there's a, a break, and they have to come out in the middle of the night?
If, if there's a break on the water line before the customers come, they're not gonna get charged for the disconnect. We may go disconnect to protect their property.
Okay, okay.
But if there's a break between the curb stop and the house, that's on the passenger, and they have to call us into.
Right.
Disconnect, right? Right? So that, that's why we would charge that fee.
I don't know if we've been doing that.
Well, it's rare.
We haven't.
It's pretty rare. But the typ- typical disconnect is when you cut someone's water. They have to pay the disconnect and reconnect to get.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the.
That's that type of charge, yeah.
Okay.
And it's, you know, like, the middle of the night, when I'll, I can remember when I would see a Bridgetown staying at the motel and all of a sudden, what is this banging and smashing under my room? It was my superintendent downstairs, because the pipe broke in the motel, or on there. Put a charge in, so that brings me to one in the morning to stop the flood in the basement, so.
Okay. All right, yeah, and I don't know if we've been charging people.
Well, it's, we would, that probably works, you just make sure you're in the right cases that you are, and that you know, and it's before the curb stop and the lot, so.
Okay.
Do you have a motion in your packages? So I'm looking for someone to make that motion. Now, I can make the motion, and I remove that, excuse me, the whole recommendation to council. The Tanisfree Water Utility Plotted in Nova Scotia Utility Review Bill for changes in its rates for water and water service, bar protection to the Tanisfree Act, and changes to its rules and regulations for customers served by the utility as set out in the water rate study prepared by GBA Eisner Consulting Limited in association with Blaney S. Rooney Consulting Limited. Moved by Councilman Krillman, could I have a second, please? I have a second, yes. And secondly, by Councilman Boots, discussion of the motion.
I just have a question. So if we get more information, um, this doesn't mean that it's going, like, we can discuss it again in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, question being called, Owen Bearden? Motion period. Uh, the correspondence. I'm just gonna read an email from Lynn Richard. I think you all have it. She wanted it forwarded to him again. Record. Shannon, I'm swatting. I saw a posted agenda from an emergency council meeting for December sixth, twenty twenty three. I arrived a few minutes before the post meeting start time of seven P M. I was met on the stairs by a counselor and was told that the session was in camera and she invited me to come back next week to the regular meeting. I was busy and not able to attend the next meeting where I was going to bring up this issue. I saw another posted agenda for an emergency council meeting for today, April second, twenty twenty four, and thought that I would bring up the issue. I arrived and said hello, council. And just before seven, I was told by the mayor that I would have to leave because this is an in-camera session. I explained that a full agenda was on the note and asked if they had switched. The in-camera session to the start of meeting instead of the end. It was explaining that there are no actual agenda items being discussed except for the in-camera session. I also, also explained that what happened on December sixth, mentioned above. This is very misleading for the public. I would ask that if you have to post. For the public, especially meeting, then please ensure that we know that there are no agenda items being discussed. Or simply indicate that this will be an in-camera session to deal with whatever the issue is. Thank you, Shannon.
Deputy Mayor, just for council's information, we're aware of that and I would agree that that's a concern. And we need to come up with a better notice for those special purpose meetings. So it doesn't include all the things and it's very clear that the main topic isn't in camera, so the people will know. And that follows the requirements. That's one of the eight reasons is given why it's in camera.
Sure.
And that's therefore the public have a better idea whether it's, that that's the only agenda item to be discussed. They will have a better idea whether they should attend or not.
I just, I do want to say, and I completely agree with the email. I did want to just clarify one thing that the, I was the person that met, uh, the resident at the top of the stair. The meeting had started at six thirty, so by the time she arrived, we were already in camera. Thank you.
And I just have one question on that. Um, because through our bylaw, it sets out our agenda. So I made the miss. I, I actually said to a resident, not the same resident, that they could come. Have their citizen comments and then they would need to leave for the in-camera session. I, I guess I don't have an issue with residents coming and if they have something to bring to us, even though it is technically only an in-camera session that's on the agenda. There's still the citizen's comments is about it.
I think we just, we will have a look at that policy.
The bylaws.
The bylaw, just to say, you know, maybe there's an amendment just to say that there's always a chance for that, the regular meetings. And that, because most units I'm involved with, the citizen comments are all regular meetings of council committee hall.
Yeah.
Whereas a special meeting, it wouldn't, it's not necessarily that automatic if that's on the agenda. But we, the thing is need to make that clear to them so they understand. That's the most important thing so everyone knows.
Yeah.
What the rule is.
And I think it's also too, for some residents, they can't come Thursday nights, but they might be able to come on a Tuesday or Wednesday or Monday. And I, I'm all for a lot of whatever, you know.
And I think we need to, as with this one, encourage people, if they can't attend, if they can't to, to send. They send in advance of the meeting an email to raise a concern that might for correspondents that could be received by council, so that their concerns.
Yeah.
Can be heard.
Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
I just had one thing. Some may not have heard Jason Hahn mention this when he, after the meeting was over, when he left. That he took it as a very good constructive criticism and will amend some of his training documents to make sure that. Those kinds of things don't happen for other municipalities. So that's a good comment.
Uh, Mr. Grant, so you want to do the, uh, some engineering?
No, I believe, uh, Randy is with us virtually.
Okay, I can't see that fair, so.
Uh, there, she just came off mute, so, uh, I'd rather let her do this for, she's. Fully aware of all the background and I can just sit here and fumble through it for you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so I, you have the report handy there and really I've outlined any of the variances from budget. Any of the high variances in the report? So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
I have one. Um, so I think I understand that the, um. The budget versus actual is sort of based on the cyclical. Is it just a straight nine months or is it cyclical?
It's not. Yeah, this is the third quarter, so it would be nine months.
So the, the budget is just a nine, like nine twelfths of a year.
Okay, yeah, and I, um, actually Kevin pointed it out on my reports, the first three or four columns are year to date. So it's nine months. And just for reference, the farthest column would be the annual budget. Just so you have a comparative to where we are and what the full entire year is, but. First four columns are year to date, nine months, last column is annual, full twelve.
Okay. And so, um. Any projections on the surplus?
Yes, I do have a projection and, um. It is around a hundred, between a hundred and a hundred and fifty. There are some serious footnotes on that. Uh, snow and ice, always a concern. Uh, also too, we have some developments out there that. We have sent out for engineering, so we're waiting for those engineering fees. And, um, it seems to be dragging on a little longer, so I anticipate it might be higher than we expect. So. Keep that in mind when you listen to my projection.
Thank you.
Kevin did a review of the documents and he and I talked about a projection, so, uh, going forward on the quarterly, I will include that, uh, in your report. I do it for myself just to make sure that there's nothing that we have to pivot for during the year if, you know, we're in trouble or if. We're well ahead, so you guys are aware of that, too. So I'll add that column, uh, going forward.
Okay.
Answering to you, any questions?
And first one.
Oh, not at this time, sorry.
How can you write your things?
Sorry.
You know what?
Thank you, Mrs. Fenuke.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Where are you? Oh, the water utility.
Yeah, sorry.
I have one question on yet. Uh, is that okay? Yes, yeah. Um, anything you wanted to add to the presentation tonight?
Uh, to the water rate study?
Yes, or, yeah.
Sure, um, I just, I guess the one comment I have is that, um. Last year, when we submitted our capital budget to the N S U A R B, every year we have to submit budgets and, um. Year-end statements, et cetera, for their review. They also, um, recommended that we do a water rate study. So they're aware of the potential, um, huge cost. In the future and knowing that it is a class D estimate. And as well with Riverside, um, when we went to the U A R B, that last rate study, the increases there were based on the Riverside. Water portion and that was delayed two or three years and just every year I committed to telling the U A R B if. We got the funding or not. So they're fine with that as long as they're kept in the loop.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess I do have another comment, sorry. Uh, we do do the water disconnects, um, we sort of on a regular basis. But since I've been there for five and X amount of years, we've never had a call out at night, so we've never done that two hundred dollar disconnect.
Thank you. This is Gina. Planning advisory, is Mr. Cook with us? Not seeing his typical name up there. Is there someone who can speak on his behalf?
You're the only one. You're the only one. November fifteen was a long time ago. I was there, but I tried. I don't know if I can speak on it.
I need this.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything. I think he was just gonna let his report stand. I don't think there's any required. Motions to go to council at this point.
Okay.
Um.
But it will be discussed at the next P A C.
Yes, yeah.
For disinformation purposes?
And Miss. Freeman would be like to. Interview.
Sure. So I guess everybody knows that we have an insurance C A O. Welcome, fellas. Um, first day was January ninth. And, uh, the recruiter, the R F P for recruiter, uh, deadline and opening was today at two o'clock. And, um, the opening was held with staff member Randy Bukey, I would definitely may or myself. We received eight R F Ps.
Wow.
And one late one, missed the deadline. Um, the bids ranged from a low of thirteen thousand five hundred. To a high of forty three thousand seven hundred. Those are inclusive of H S T and then expenses like advertising and so on would be over and above that. So our interim C A O and committee are gonna review them and make a recommendation at our council meeting. Uh, answer any questions if I can.
So are you able to tell us who those eight were? This is the public.
Yeah, so, uh, we receive from S P L Human Capital. M C Advisory. Placemaking Four G. Higher Talent. Facet, F A C E T.
F A D E T?
K B R S.
Okay.
J M C.
J M C, that's all it is? Okay.
And Prophecy. P R O P H E C Y.
P R O P what?
P H S E Y. They some have some longer names, so they're abbreviated here when we.
Okay.
If you only, so we'll be, what I'll be helping do is develop the criteria to evaluate, which costs will only be one factor, so we're not gonna read the boss into the public record.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
So that's.
No name.
Yeah.
Um. So.
We don't disclose. The name of the late one. Because.
No, no, no. No. Um, I do have one question. Are we, I know that. I'm just wondering that if I shouldn't just ask you that privately. I'm just wondering about, um. The criteria, like what criteria you're gonna be looking at. I don't mean cost and I don't mean like.
What I, what I do is I, I started preliminary and then I'll discuss with the committee. It's basically, I took the, what was sent, what was posted as the R F Q.
Yeah, I didn't see it, so.
So it's basically pulling things out. That were specifically mentioned there because we can't use anything that is not specifically mentioned.
Right, okay, okay.
So we have eight things, we, there were eight things in the scope of work. So scope of work, obviously, commitment to delete scope of work. There was an insurance requirement.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's, that's what I was wondering about.
And, you know, experience.
Yeah, okay.
Generic quality of proposal.
Okay, okay.
And, and yes, uh, there was a guaranteed provision.
Yes, I was gonna go back to that, but my real question was the guarantee and I didn't know if I should ask it or not.
No, it was in the R F Q, so probably information.
Okay. Is, is there anywhere we can find those R F P? Like, I didn't, I actually did not see it.
Yeah, so, um. What we do is we post on provincial procurement site.
Okay.
Which is the requirement, the leading requirement for anything. Now is to go through prevention procurement because it's the easiest.
Easy way to do it, yeah, through the portal, yeah, yeah.
It's, uh.
Okay.
Now, whether the public can, we should put them on our website as well. We've probably gotta get a process going on that to make sure they're up on our website and not sure about one less.
Yeah, oh, I didn't see it, like.
Just, yeah, that's, that's one thing I wanna look at, just so the people know we are, everybody, because. Uh, the generic member of the public just can't go on to the procurement website, that's how they can see the bill.
So it has to be a member, yeah.
Yeah, it's not even see public, they'd mostly have to be a member, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Just so they can at least solve the citizens easier. They can, if they know someone in business, they will have you seen the procurement website and this is there.
Right, okay. All right, perfect, thanks.
Um, the development officer appointment.
Yes, so, um. There were just, mayor was in discussions, I think, along with Randy West. For our own Colchester about potential of. Uh, outsourcing the D O activity, belt and officer activity. That was previously done by your C A O. Uh, I have no experience in that. I'm not trained in that field and come from finance and a little bit in public works background and administration side of things, not the planning and development, so. Uh, to let me approve. Permits and things, I would only get the town in more trouble than it worth. I will gladly admit my shortcomings in that one field. So, uh. It was decided that that is, uh, they would approach them, so the town of Toronto has come back and said they would be willing to provide the development officer. On a temporary basis to try them. Uh, so where it would be, uh, Jason Fox would be responsible for it. He may delegate some of that within his own department. Most of it would be done from Toronto with the electronic, and then he could come out after he gets applications, need to come, could come down and meet with proponents, et cetera. But all the initial exchange of documents can happen electronically. Uh, so we handed it just before the meeting. You can see Jason's, uh, resume there, so very experienced in the field. Uh, so, you know. I think we would do a great job. They're willing to do it for ninety two dollars an hour, plus any mileage to come or out of pocket expenses related to it. Uh, and just to try, they don't think it'll take more than a day, week for them on it, so, which is good. Uh, unless all of a sudden there's a flood of applications, which, whether it was them or someone else, you're gonna have to be, beg them to go through that. It's not. They don't wanna start in on the full planning yet. They just wanna try doing the D O. Stosil, you know, make sure Grant's still comfortable doing the planning for now and then. We may explain, if this works, we may expand into the, some joint planning with them as well. But this is, this is to get us over. Um, you know, we probably have a vacancy down in the office as it is, so it's really. Uh, it's taxing on, on the staff that's there now to try to get somebody's movement, so.
So I do have a question and I'm not opposed to this at all, because I always said this shouldn't necessarily be a C A O role. Currently in our C A O bylaw, it does say that it's the responsibility of the C A O.
Mm-hmm.
So before we appoint somebody or. How does that work? We're written in the bylaw that it's the C A O. Job or duty right now, would the bylaw not need to be amended to remove said clause before we.
Well. There again, urine is the important thing, I think. Yeah, we should amend the bylaw. But I, as far as the ordering of it, the most important thing is we provide the service the best way we can. So the D O, even when you have a vacancy, the D O function's being done by our staff, not C A O. So, yeah, we may be outside the bylaw, but we can amend it. But the most important thing is we don't stop all approvals over a tech, that type of technicality.
Oh, I agree. I just don't know that technicality.
It should be, as we go through the H R committee goes through, we should look, definitely look at that as as recruitment process and say, well, maybe we should amend our C A O bylaw to remove that.
Really, the H R committee? I thought it was just to hire a C A O. But that was a mandate of committee. I I'm not clear on.
I may have misspoke in my.
No, honestly, I'm not, I'm not clear on the mandate of that committee at all.
It's not to review the C A O bylaw.
Or maybe the policy bylaw committee, I guess, we'll look at that, yes, yeah.
No, but what is the, what is the, I I thought the hiring committee was just that, to hire the C A O. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But they can have input based on what they're seeing from candidates, I guess, into the policy reading part, yeah.
Is it, can it be the, to further on Council Rogers line question, the C A O or his delegate? But I don't know if it says that in the bylaw.
I would. Yeah. If it does say words delegate, then, you know, I could delegate to this person, but, yeah.
And and I will say, Jason Fox is wonderful. I, when I was on the library board before and we did the Truro library, he was amazing.
Is that right?
Amazing.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah. Like I was on on the construction committee for the Truro library, which was the Normal College. And Jason was like hu, amazing. So we're just looking at one day a week? Is that what we're thinking?
That's best estimate right now. Feels he can do it one day a week.
Pretty busy right now.
Yeah, I think they're busy, we're busy, but it's, we'll have to see, and that's why he wants to be troubled, is all.
Right.
Because I'm trying to think, a huge chunk is not going to last very long.
I don't like going against bylaws, but I don't want our town to go in.
Exactly, yes.
Further down a different road.
Let's find, you need to find it. This is the active, the bylaw, I see. Doesn't say delegate.
Hey, this is Jutri. Hello. So we created a new committee, I think.
Should there be a motion on this, though?
And I just have one question. So right now, we're we're in a committee of the whole. So it's a recommendation. So who's actually doing the development officer role right now?
No, there, the back downs are just trying to keep stuff, some paper. But they're not signing on.
On anything, okay, okay.
So if we have a motion to recommend, then if there's an emergency, we can do a, call emergency, do any point.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we approve the appointment of Jason H. Fox from the town of Truro as the development officer for the town of Stuyak on an interim basis.
And motion made by Council Osborne, and they have a second, please. I can second. Seconded by Council roots, session of the motions, question, let it's been called, all day. Motion period.
Wow, so in, I think, October or November, we approved a new development of committees, the Parks, Rec and Special Events Committee. We have not had an appointment of council members onto that committee. I did attach the terms of reference to that committee in there, just to know what the membership looks like. So we would like to have a committee, so we need some members on that committee.
Two members of council?
We do need two members of council.
And, oh, yes, one of the members has to chair, right?
Correct.
So there's no chair, so there's no recommendation.
Correct.
When do you meet? What night?
We have not set that yet, because.
You have no committee?
We haven't.
Yeah.
Again, it says a minimum of six times a year, so can be more, can't be less than that.
I'll go on. I don't know if I necessarily want a chair. Most is going to come with me, though.
Yes, I will make a motion.
So I would make the motion, if we need the whole, recommend to council to appoint the mayor of Chatlin and Council Osborne to the Parks Recreation and Events.
In the second phase. Right, in second, seconded by Councilmen. A special motion, nice. That should be, I lose a favor. Motion period.
So in December, we had appointments of citizens on case of council. And we set a deadline for applications to the end of December. So we now have received the six in total. And all names will receive a spot on one of the desired committees, should council move forward with the motions presented in front of them. And all applications were circulated to members of council.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
Looking for a motion for the recognition.
I can do that. Now read them all in one shot. The town of Stuyak council recommend Beate Acker and Cassandra Swallow to the audit committee. The town of Stuyak council recommend Melanie Hager, Chris Pellin, Audrey Arisweli and Ian Delver to the Policy Committee. The town of Stuyak council recommend Beate Acker to the Parks Recreation and Events Committee. And the town of Stuyak recommends Todd Fleck to the Business and Thorreson Committee.
Moving by Councilman.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Council Osborne, discussion on the motion.
Question.
Questions being called, all in favor. Motion period. Citizens comments? Do you see the chat option? No, nothing on there. Unmuted. No comments? There's none in the chat, okay. Anyone in the gallery have any comments, citizens' comments? Hearing none, we'll move along to the mayor's report, which I don't have. A sunny south on a beach in Pinewood, so I'm just. And I don't have a report either, so have the rubbish.
No, I don't.
No, Sir Osborne.
I just want to welcome Kevin and say, hopefully you don't run into any winter traveling.
All right, yesterday morning was fun.
Yeah.
I attended the regional accessibility meeting, meeting in Truro. Just happy new year, everybody. Okay, there's no name, Cameron Secky. There's no names of motion in the preparation, so I will. Well, I'm getting you, Jennifer.
Eight thirty-eight.